Testing 123. This will be the September 20th, 2017 City Council Regular Meeting.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, September 20th, 2017, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence and pledge, and please keep in your thoughts all the people that got hit with another hurricane in this 22nd year, please. One moment of silence. Pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Before we move to citizens' comments, I'd like to take a moment here to thank Courtney and your staff, first responders, and really everybody, all the department heads. Incredible job. If you spent some time with them during the storm, I've had that opportunity, and just an amazing job. Incredible job. I want to thank you guys for doing great. And I know you felt bad not getting Dr. Brymer's cooking.
They didn't really feel bad.
I know. It can't happen to feel bad. But great job, everyone. Thank you so very much. Moving on to citizens' comments, this is for non-agenda items. So if you are here for an agenda item, and please wait for that time, if you are here for a non-agenda item, podium's open, you have three minutes. Please.
Good evening. My name's Mike Arnold. I live at 515 Harwood Avenue, and I'm here to ask some questions in regards to the old Peg Leggs property.
Mike, that's an agenda item.
No, sir, that's an ordinance about the piece of property. The purchase of the, of the sale of the property is not an agenda item.
Okay.
Is that correct? Thanks, Frank. All right. So if I could, who was on the council when we purchased the property? Yes, sir. So probably you might agree that we shouldn't have bought it in the first place. The property should have been condemned, the building should have been torn down, we should have set a lien on the property and been paid back when the property was sold by a private individual. I don't believe the city government has any place in buying private property to hold and exclude developments from it. But that was, that was water under the bridge. Now, as I understand it, there have been some offers made to the city in excess of a million dollars. Is that correct, Mrs. Parker? There's been other offers besides the $500,000, and can you, can you expand upon some of those offers?
Can you direct it to me and I'll answer.
All right. Yes, sir, Mr. Cantina. So these other offers, are you aware of the other offers?
We are. You have three minutes, and you want to say your piece, and then let me answer all your questions.
Yes, sir. Okay. Well, as my understanding, the cities should be good stewards of our money and have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Satellite Beach. And what you're contemplating is taking a million dollar loss plus the lost property taxes of the, we purchased it for 1.5, we're selling it for 500. If my, if I'm wrong, please correct me. I'm not, I don't, I make mistakes like everybody else. But my understanding is we purchased the property for 1.5, and we're going to sell it for 500,000. And we've had other offers in excess of a million dollars, but they don't come, they don't, we don't like what they're going to put there. In a commercial area, high-traffic A1A, Peg Leggs was a high-traffic restaurant, I'm sure you recall, Frank, that the parking lot was packed many a times, especially Friday and Saturdays. And I'm wondering, what we could have purchased with the million dollars we're willing to lose, and I don't believe this offer ever should have reached the light of day, but I do believe that you have a fiduciary responsibility of the citizens of Satellite Beach to be prudent with our money. And I would like to hear the other offers that have come to the city manager and what those dollar amounts were and why we're not accepting those.
Let me first start with this piece of property in general. Back 2002, am I correct on the date? This piece of property came to us with a gas station going on for the betterment of the community because of the sheer number of citizens that came out and did not want that type of zoning to, for that particular type zoning on that corner, they didn't want a gas station. We cannot zone a business out. The zoning on that corner allows a gas station, the residents in that area packed this courtroom. The only way we could stop for that type of usage was for us to purchase the property, and that's what we did. 1.25, Courtney, was it? Again, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. It was about, it was 1.5.
Okay, 1.5.
Yes, sir.
And that's what it was worth, because that was the contract at that time when the economy on property and houses and everything else was on an uprise. We did it because of the citizens, for the betterment of the community, for what the citizens wanted, okay? We could sell that property today, I'm sure, fairly close to that amount if we wanted that type of a business on that corner. But the reason we bought the property to begin with, because the residents of our town did not want that.
You mean some of the residents?
Mike, I'm going to tell you, Mike, it was-
A vocal minority.
It was not-
And did a private citizen put the retainer down on the property so they could hold it? Like, $5,000 was put down by a private citizen? Are we, this is citizens' comment, this is, okay, welcome comments and we'll-
I answered questions to you the way we did it back then, Courtney.
Okay, so my question is the other offers that came to the, the other offers is my question.
Since then?
Recently, in the last years, recently, what are the offers we've had and for how much?
Courtney, you want to answer?
We had a lot of property development proposals come through after we retained an attorney, I mean, realtor, I'm sorry. A lot of times we didn't even ask what the price was because it wasn't a use that you all wanted. We knew it was a gas station, we just said no. We had a number of drive-through restaurants come through, we knew that that wasn't going to be something you wanted, we turned that down. We did, we did get a gas station offer close to what we could have, what we bought it for, but again, we turned that down because that's not what the city wanted. The city wanted a mixed-use development, something that we could share parking with for the beach, stuff like that, so we turned that down. So when we got this offer that came in, we worked very hard with the developer to make it into a project that we thought everybody would, would be good with, but also would work in our current market environment, the commercial market. The city never bought the property for a park, the city never bought the property for anything other than a mixed-use development or some other type of development that would work well in that corner, that would be compatible with the adjacent residential community. And I think you have to understand that even, even though Peg Leggs and Corinthians were there, it wasn't like the residents that surrounded that area liked it. It's hard to live next to a restaurant like that, it's hard to live with the Corinthian apartments. I don't know if you ever remember what those apartments looked like, but I do, because I had friends that lived there. They weren't exactly the nicest places, so, so we don't want to replicate something that wasn't working, and that's what the council asked me to do, was go for offers that were more compatible use-wise with the community that was there. Local governments all the time purchase property to control the development of it. We purchased a lot of our beachfront property to control the development of it, to preserve it. There's governments all over the place that purchase property for the purpose of economic development. For example, the county owns a great big industrial park out in Titusville for the sole purpose of promoting industrial development there. They own all that property. So there's, there's many times where we step in and, and control the market because we want to control what happens to the residents and what, you know, what services are offered to the residents, and that's what we did here. It's not unusual for that to happen. In this case, we bought the property at the height of the market. We will likely never be able to retain that, that, I mean, we'll get close if we wanted to have a gas station, but it would take years for us to get back to that level of value. There's just not a commercial value here anymore. We lost, we've lost population over the years, I don't think a lot of people realize that. We have lost a lot of base population that used to service a lot of our commercial restaurants. We lost, the south housing is practically a third now of what the population used to be, if that, I mean, it may be even less. So we don't have the population that we used to have that sustained a lot of the older commercial sites that we have now. So it's hard to do a commercial development.
With no disrespect-
So yes, we could sell it, we could sell it for a gas station. Is this what you're asking for? We could sell it for a gas station, we could probably get close to the value that we asked for, but the, again, I was told and given direction to go find an offer that included a mixed-use development that we could share parking for the neighboring, for the, for basically our beach residents that overflow parking onto that site, and that's what we did.
Don't we have a large south Patrick housing complex coming?
No, there's nothing, nothing large from, if you're looking at 110-ish acres there.
So by excluding a gas station, we're willing to take a million dollar loss?
We, again, yes, and I'm going to tell you the reason, because the citizens of this town, back in 2002, I believe, built this court, this room here, sent us letters, and were very outspoken concerning what was going on there.
Can I, can I just say this too? The city is not going to take a million dollar loss because the city would never get a million dollars out of it, regardless of what we do. We will not make a hun, we will not sell that property for 1.5 million dollars because the market is not there, it's not going to be there for years. We could get closer to that if we sold it for a gas station, but we will lose all parking rights. And part of the price that we're selling it for is so we can continue to use parts of that property for public parking.
How many spaces?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Okay. Apologize, I thought it was less than ten.
So that's the answer to it on this question. I hope that answered your question. I know this is not in citizens' comment portion. I don't really think it's a debate because we're just going to give you the information.
Well, my job is to convince three out of five people that it is, so I'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment for non-agenda items are still open, if there's anyone that'd like to speak on non-agenda items. Okay, here are none, bring it back to council. Council comments? Mindy, would you like to start?
Sure. Courtney and I attended the delegation meeting today where our state representatives were filling us in on everything going on, and pretty much the supportive voice of the cities and everyone there is still home rule and making sure that our, us as cities still are able to reflect the will of the residents as opposed to the state doing that, because unfortunately that would either never, never happen or it would take a really long time. Survived the hurricane, eight days without power. You really learn how creative you can get with three children and no electricity, and too scared to use the gas in your car to go anywhere else. So I'm still trying to recuperate from that physically. I think that our, our city, our public works, again, were just outstanding. All the departments really did an amazing job with clearing the roads and making sure we were safe, and I just want to thank you all for being awesome, and that's pretty much it for right now.
Thank you.
I just want to echo some of the comments that were made by Frank and Mindy. Y'all did an outstanding job, but I think the thing that impressed me most about the whole scenario that played out was the way we took care of our first responders and public works with hot meals. This is no disrespect to your cooking or anything, Mark, but, you know, for them to be able to come in and have the meals that you had set, set up for them, I think made a huge difference in the morale of our employees that were away from their families and working 12- and 14-hour days, and I just want to say thank you, you did a great job, all of our staff did. That's all I have.
All I have to say is I will get over not being asked to cook. But great job, guys, thank you very much to everybody who was a part of this, so thank you. And I received nothing but 100% compliments on the efforts of the city and the city staff, no, no criticisms at all, which is, you always find one, but I've gotten nothing, so thank you, everybody, that's all I have.
I would just like to add that it was really seeing the citizens helping each other out. I, like, Mindy spent many a day without power, but I'm glad John Stone, the building department, had come over to see extension cords that were running, you know, three, four, five yards back and forth, were neighbors who had a generator, were saying, "Here, please come and plug into my house, let me keep your refrigerator going." Like I said, I know just where I'm at. There was people running cords and packing ice and, and really helping each other out, and you could see it in all the neighborhoods, where all the neighbors were out in their driveways, helping with branches, cleaning stuff out, so I thought that was great. It was great to do all that, not only from all of our public works, even though I was down there cleaning out the grate and getting harassed by our local police department as I was cleaning the grate out at the end of Cinnamon, but it was really nice seeing the citizens take care of each other. And that, that's what I think is really great about Satellite Beaches, and times like this when we all pull together and take care of each other, that intermixed with our police and fire and public works folks, it was, it was really a great recovery scene that we have here. That's all I have.
Great, I have nothing. You said it before. Thank you, everybody. Great job. Moving on to agenda item five, city manager report, Courtney.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to thank my staff for all of their hard work. We, you know, we have a really, really good team, so they make me look great. I don't really do much in the hurricane, I sit and do what they tell me to do. Cassie is the one who, who provided that with the meals. You know, just having all of, all of our police officers on deck, you know, seeing all of the firefighters responding throughout the storm was a big comfort to our community, and people saw that. And fortunately, a lot of people did not evacuate the storm, but we did get a lot of, you know, people that got to see how we deal with it during the storm. They saw, I got emails from people who saw public works cleaning out drains in the middle of the storm. We did respond to numerous medical calls throughout the storm. One in, one instance where one of our dispatchers knew that this particular address was in the unincorporated area, normally would call the sheriff and just switch it over. She just had a feeling that she needed to stay online, and it was a good thing because the sheriff's office or Brevard County Rescue said it was too strong of a storm, the conditions, they couldn't respond. So our fire department did respond, and they did, ended up transporting her to the hospital in the back of one of their vehicles to, in the middle of the storm. So we have some, we have story after story like that in every one of our hurricane responses. This one was a little different, we had a number of stories this time. But we do have one sad, sad item, and that's we did lose one of our great friends to the city, and that's Bill Spiegelhalter. He passed away September 14th, and I have to say, that one was hard for me. I did get to know him pretty well, and I just, you know, I was, I'm going to have a hard time talking about it. But his services are coming up this weekend, so we'll, we'll be able to see Sharon at the time. I did receive a thank you note from Bill and Bud and Billy Mayor thanking the police and fire departments for the long hours they put into the hurricane and storm. I actually received 100 after this, so you'll see it next, your next meeting. And then a thank you note from Robert Becker thanking Officer Hosman for ensuring his safety during the hurricane. I also received a call from Space Coast Living magazine that saw a number of our Facebook posts with our sandbag operation, I don't know if you got to see that. We had numerous volunteers that would show up, they went to go get their own sandbags, saw other people that needed help, and ended up staying there all day, helping people put sandback, sand and sandbag, in addition to our public works and our fire departments who are out there helping out. So we had a lot of pictures of that. We also had a lot of pictures of, the fire department is now, we created a fence program where we're putting up the orange fencing for people that have pools and their fences are down, and they're going out and installing it for people right now. They saw that, and so now they wanted pictures. So they called us, and so you'll look for that in the Space Coast Living magazine, you'll see a lot of Satellite Beach pictures. We also had a lot of city helping city instances during the storm. For example, we had Palm Bay Utility workers going over to Cocoa to help them with water main breaks. We had 15 pallets of water here in Satellite prepared for a boil water notice. We didn't have one, thank, you know, thankful, we're very thankful to the Melbourne Water Utility who kept us out of isolating this water system in this hurricane, as well as kept us out of a boil water notice. We did have water use restrictions, but that is nothing compared to a boil water notice when you have no power. So regardless, we, we didn't need that water, so we sent it, we shipped it over to the, to City of Cocoa Beach, so they were able to give out that water to their residents. So we have a lot of examples of that, and you'll be seeing that coming out of the news pretty soon. I wanted to give you an update on the damage through the hurricane to our, some of our facilities. We, for our De Soto Recreation Complex, we had minor damage to the racquetball court roof. We had two tennis court lights damaged and a shade cover canopy over bleachers was destroyed, and I mean destroyed, right? Destroyed. And one set of bleachers that was, that was destroyed. Pelican Clubhouse, we only suffered minor damage to the soffits and the metal roof, which is just incredible to me. The community center, isn't it incredible, the one building that we worry about? The community center, we had significant roof leaking, roof damage, basically, water intrusion in at least six areas, including our main offices, dance room, gymnasium. The roof was punctured by a piece of equipment, and one high window in the lobby area has a crack in it, so we had some roof damage to the, to the community center. The dog park, we had some fence damage, but the, incredibly, some volunteers have pretty much rigged that so we could open up really fast. And we had some, our public workshop was flooded, one of the, the few instances of pretty significant water, and that was three inches of water in, in the public works building. And then also the civic center, we had water intrusion in the AC room between Oleander and Scotty Culp rooms, and that's, that's pretty much it. So we, we came out very well. We have some, the beach access damage that we had, we're not even claiming that, right? It's, it was, it can be fixed. But of course, we have no beach, so that was one of the issues that we presented today at the Brevard County delegation meeting. And we also presented your priorities, of course, with Indian River Lagoon, protecting municipal revenue sources, and, and home rule. And with the home rule discussion, we, we talked about short-term rentals. What was great about that discussion is in looking at each of the legislators, they were all, it appeared to be in very much agreement with what I was saying. So at least our local delegation understands that issue, and it looks like they're all very supportive of the city's position.
Good.
I have one action item before we, we end my report, and that is, we have a vessel that's less than $100, it's an old boat trailer, it's rusting and falling apart and can't be safely towed, and we have no value to the city, and we would like to transfer it to an individual who used, who has used old boats and trailer parts. And, and we just need your permission to do that. We just don't have a administrative process yet to do that on our own.
I'll make a motion to dispose of the property with the city's, city manager's recommendation. I want a motion by, counsel in the mouth, I want a second by counsel in Barker, because it's an action item, I'll open up for public comment. Do you have a number back to council? Any further questions? More?
Counsel McGibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Counsel Brymer?
Yes.
Counsel Oftener?
Yes.
Eric Tina?
Yes, motion passed, please. Courtney, anything else?
Yeah, one more thing if I can, yeah, and it's directed at Courtney, I'm going to direct it at chief, too. Something I've had a little bit of personal experience with, and it's just something, you don't have to respond, just kind of want you to think about it. We've got 25 to 30% of our population, 65 and above, depending on what day it is. We saw what happened in Hollywood when they had no air, no heat, first couple of days, like it was here, it was fine, then the wind stopped and it jumped up to 87. So I guess what I'm throwing at you, chief, is, let's say half of that population decides it's not leaving, and all of a sudden we've kind of got a lot of people aged 65 and above that are just overheated. It's going to, it's going to max you guys out plus the fire department. So I just, it just kind of hit me that with Courtney saying, "These people aren't leaving, we got a mess." If, if they all start day four, just like with the eight-day stay that Mindy had, that, that would finish most of those folks off in some degree, it'd be massive. So I'm not, I'm not looking for an answer. I'm sure other communities have kind of thought this through and that sort of thing, but I just kind of want to throw it out there, if you can kick it around your head for six months or whatever it happens to be, I just think that it could, it could be a proactive thing, look what Satellite Beach implemented, and that's what they're going to try versus, oh, look what happened in Satellite Beach. I mean, and it's not directed to the, any of the ALFs that we've got in the community, because they're going to all be covered under ACA and the generators in ACA and Rick Scott and all that stuff that's going on, so it's not going to be as much them as it's going to be just the individual homeowners that are sitting there, so.
And we, we heard about it, trust me.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I think the mayor got, has probably more phone calls than I did, which, if he did, I feel bad for him because I got a lot.
Okay.
And, you know, it's interesting how FPL, you know, it's better not to mess with them in, in their process, because they, they have a process, and when you start politicizing it, it makes it harder for them. So, but I will intervene for, for people who clearly have a dangerous issue, you know? But we were, we were discussing this, and I think a lot of us were talking about maybe sitting down with FPL to talk about undergrounding some of the back utilities in people's backyards, because that's, those are the ones that go down. It's not Jackson, it's not South Patrick.
Right.
It's, it's the ones that in people's backyards, because the poles are so flimsy, they're old, and they're got, they've got trees all over them. And, and so we were looking at maybe, you know, is there a way to start talking about that? And, and I know it's a tough thing to do.
Well, here, and here's the other side of this. Oh, look what Satellite Beach did, they fixed all the power lines, I'm 70 years old, I don't have to go anywhere now, I can stay here and my power will be on. But, you know, you get category whatever above two, and everybody's gone. So it's just something to think about. I could just see you guys just going house to house to, and what are we going to do? That kind of thing.
Right.
So anyhow, just throwing it out there, so.
Make it, will there comments?
It's a tough issue.
Yeah, and I don't have cognitively any process on it right now.
I would say the only comments that I heard is, you know, we had the discussion about FPL and hardening their system, and I don't know how many times I had residents tell me, "Well, that was a big fail." You know, they hardened the system and, and what, all 300,000 FPL customers at one time lost power, whether it was for 15 minutes or a day.
Well, I have to, I have to say, you know, hardening so you don't ever lose power, and hardening so you can get it back up pretty darn fast are two different things.
Right.
And so, so their defense, if you have above-ground power, and a lot of places in Florida demand that because the water table's too high to put it underground.
Right.
So if you, and, and you can put it underground with that water table, but if that, if that water's surrounding it, they can't fix it when something goes wrong, so.
That's true.
So when, and there's been numerous places that had underground utilities, and then when something went wrong, they had to wait till the water sited before they could get the power back. So it can be a blessing and a curse at the same time. Now, they did, back in 2004, it took, I, I waited three weeks for power, I don't know if anybody else remembers that, but I, I did. And, you know, two to three weeks was the standard. And now we've moved that up for a, a, a storm that affected pretty much most of the state. Most of the state was affected by the storm, and that's also unheard of. Most of the storms are, you know, in one area, two or three counties. In this case, it, it affected most of the state of Florida, and they got everybody's power back up on the east coast in, in, in a week.
A week. That's true. I just like you said, I mean, they advertise that a lot, you know, the hardening of the system, the hardening of the system, the hardening system, and, and I say that especially from the South Patrick, only because I can tell you what, one house off of South Patrick. And my problem is exactly what you said, the, the poles snapped right across the street, and last year during, or last during Matthew, the same problem, I think, was behind Dave Abernathy's house up there where the tree was, took down all the power lines that took everybody out for that week. So I, I agree with you that in some cases, that would probably be more beneficial. I, I don't think it was 100% clear, no matter what we do, but that would definitely be more beneficial to it.
Well, it's interesting, because last year Courtney and I, with the gentleman from FPL, a week or so after the storm.
Remember that, yeah.
We got an education of who the poles belonged to, and the majority of the poles that go behind people's houses don't belong to FPL.
I remember that.
They belong to AT&amp;T.
Yep.
Depends, you look at the cut on the top of the pole, that's the defining factor. So we did travel the city, and, because I said Courtney and me walk in the city each day, I was noticing these poles at age, a lot of trees growing up, or very old, or was in the older portion of our community. So I think, you know, again, the hardening on South Patrick, I don't, I didn't see an issue there. When you looked at where poles were broken, transformed and stuffed down, you know, that's something that we need to go back with them and have the conversation again.
Right.
To try to make it better.
But in, you know, I think the expectation of level of service with power now has changed so much over the years, because everything depends on it, cell service, you know?
Right.
Internet, everything depends on power. I mean, even gas, we learned today, the port couldn't get- I mean, even gas, we learned today, the port couldn't get gas out, or that was water. Everything depends on water, too. But yeah, even moving our sewer depended on power.
The natural gas guys were talking about the gas lines, about how they couldn't get, that was water, you're right.
Yep.
You know, some of the responsibility, I look at some of this stuff, and I've listened to people, and I've had calls, too. You know, some of the responsibility falls on the homeowners, too. They plant stuff underneath these power lines and just think that nobody's there to take care of it. They don't take care of it, and then when something falls on the line, it's like, when are you gonna get my power up? So, you know, maybe we need to do a better job of educating our residents that you don't plant things under power lines, and if you have trees that need to be trimmed, you need to trim them.
I can go on the record to say, though, it's very, if you have trees that are really close to those high-tension power lines, it's really hard to find a crew that's willing to actually get up there and do it, because I had, in my old house, we had that situation. FPL did send some of the out, the tree down.
FPL will do it.
Because it was touching on.
The problem is that they let them get to that point where you can't do anything with them, and that's part of what the problem, I think that's the education that we need, is, don't let your trees get too big, because they're part of the problem of why you're not getting your power back up quick.
Okay.
That's all there.
So, so.
That's all there.
Any other questions? Courtney, again, thank you very much for your leadership in the storm and everything, appreciate it, it was fabulous, great job. And thank you. Okay, moving on to the next agenda, item six, which was the Satellite High School track. That item has been pulled, we're still working on that agreement with the school and the county. So with your permission, I'd like to move up Agenda Item 10, which is discuss, take action on ordinance number 1144, if that is all right with that one. Okay. And that is on the boutique hotel and the property at the end of DeSoto. Anyway, Jim?
Ordinance number 1144, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Chapter 30 Land Development Regulations, Satellite Beach City Code by adding definition of boutique hotel and hotel to Section 30-107 definitions, Satellite Beach City Code, by adding boutique hotel with restrictions to list of permitted uses in Section 30-416, C Commercial District, Satellite Beach City Code, by amending Section 30-424 Sub B Sub 5, Satellite Beach City Code, by reducing minimum size of parking spaces in C Commercial District, by amending the parking table in Section 30-424 Sub C Sub 3, Satellite Beach City Code to include parking requirements for boutique hotels and eating establishments included in boutique hotels, providing for severability, providing for repeal of inconsistent provisions, and providing for an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance number 1144.
Thank you very much. This time, John, anything to present on?
Yes, the African Space Coast Architect, he's requesting amendments to the land development regulations whereby implementing development standards for the boutique hotels. As a lot of you may recall, I would say around five years ago, the comprehensive plan was changed to allow for hotel motels, bed and breakfasts, and mixed use of residential and commercial. So it's already been in our code, what we're doing here is establishing development standards. So this does affect the citywide, it's not specific to this hotel, but it does give us some options as far as a smaller version of a hotel that I believe will work very well on the west side of South Patrick Drive, I'm sorry, the west side of A1A. And Larry Maxwell, the architect, is here, if there's any questions specifically to that. As far as the parking, we're reducing it from a 10 by 20 to a 9 by 18. This is actually something that is fairly prevalent these days, that we've actually been looking at for quite some time. What it does is, particularly on the small commercial lots, you can pick up some extra parking this way. Things have changed over the years. The 10 by 20 is a somewhat antiquated dimension, you know, back when everybody had the Lincoln Continentals and the big cars, you know, it made a lot of sense. However, there's been a lot of research done and determined that the direction of the vehicles nowadays are far much smaller. And so 9 by 18 is more appropriate, it also allows for increased pervious area, as well as the increase in parking. And again, this is gonna provide some relief for all commercial businesses.
Questions for John, or questions from the council, before I open up for public comment on this agenda item? We've gone over it. Here none? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up for public comment on Agenda Item 10, ordinance number 1144. The podium's open. Here none? On the side, sorry. Page one? Yes, sir.
My name is Larry Maxwell, I'm with Space Coast Architects. I caught the discussion earlier in the evening here with a gentleman that was asking about, you know, the property and what have you. One of the things I wanted to bring, unfortunately, I wish he would've stuck around, when we worked with the client on this property, one of the things that we did at the very beginning was trying to find what sort of commercial mixed use could work in Satellite Beach with the commercial markets right now. And we looked at a number of different things, not gas stations, but we did look at retail, we looked at restaurant lounges, we looked at office space. As we found, both because, typically architects don't do this, but because of our knowledge of the marketplace and what other clients are looking for, we know, for example, there is a glut of office space, rental office space in South Brevard right now. And so those rental rates are down because there's more space than are people asking for them. So we determined that really wasn't a good market scheme. Retail by itself wasn't a good marketplace, because this is not a downtown pedestrian area, and that kind of retail space really requires pedestrian movement, say, in a core downtown area to work. And that's when we came up with the boutique hotel. The issue of the parking, prior to us even having the client come to us with this project at DeSoto, I had met with the City of Satellite Beach Sustainability Committee and had read your things on the sea level rise on Solar for the Town, and the FIT study, the sustainability, read all of those to see where y'all were headed. And one of the first things I had wanted to recommend to the city before this project came up was parking and the parking requirements that exist in the city code right now, the 10 by 20s. We've actually done some research and pulled federal DOT, Department of Transportation statistics that showed that over 80% of all registered vehicles in the United States, and that includes cars, trucks, motorcycles, buses, semis, and every licensed vehicle that's on the road, about 80% of those are small vehicles that, for example, a full-size minivan is only 16 feet long and 6 feet wide. Yet we had recommended even smaller spaces, because of course, especially with a place like Satellite Beach, you're be concerned as stormwater runoff, impervious areas and what have you. Even when you can meet the parking requirement, the less impervious area you can create, the better off y'all are. And so we had actually proposed that. When we did the project for the DeSoto A1A site, we actually designed it with the full-size 10 by 20 parking spaces, because that's, of course, is your requirement. We found we could meet some of the parking that you had requested as part of additional parking for the site, but we saw that if we could propose even 50% of the parking to be reduced a bit, that we could gain, I think it was four additional parking spaces for the project. And so we said, you know, would you wanna consider this? It is not, it is nothing that affects this project one way or the other, because we can meet all of our parking, plus the parking that you requested, with the full-size spaces. But just, if we're trying to do an environmental project, as you're aware, this is what this project really is a showcase of, that to do the full 10 by 20 spaces at some point seemed to fly in the face of everything else we're trying to accomplish. And so that was where that decision, or that discussion came about. And so they were not part of this project, it was something that says that if the city decides to go this route, you know, across the board, because it really makes more sense, you know, it enhances the portions of the project that you're asking for, which is additional parking, but we could, of course, do our entire project with the parking requirements that the city requires for the different uses that we have on the site at the full 10 by 20. So that's what that was all about. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on either of those issues, if you have any.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I have a question.
Sure.
If we do allow this change, would you consider changing your parking sizes and maybe get us some additional parking, or is this a looking at you?
That's what, it's already based on.
Yeah, the additional parking spaces were based on going to the smaller size. Okay, we gained a few extra spaces, we were able to get, I believe, 10 spaces, additional parking spaces for y'all, and right now, it's been a few months now.
More, but there's a few that I don't think will meet the muster in the same plan.
So we have, so we were able to find a few more by reducing those a little bit. And even at the time, what we did was, not knowing whether the town would approve that, we did that study, we also did a study where what happens if we leave literally 50% of parking spaces full-sized, and 50% of parking spaces at this reduced size as a request for this project, to see how that worked, too, because we were trying to figure out ways to make, you know, the best benefit to the city, and see if, if there had been no benefit, we wouldn't have proposed it at all. So that's where we're at right now with it.
I think we have one more question, Mark?
Has nothing to do with parking. Are you looking at 25 rooms, is that what it is?
Correct, correct.
Okay, that's, I just wanna make sure. That's all I have.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public comment for this agenda item is still open. Okay. Hearing no further, public comment on Agenda Item 10. I'll. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 10144. Second, one first reading. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Brymer.
Yes.
And we just open up further discussion from council?
I have none.
Hearing none? One more?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, staff, thank you very much. Okay. Excuse me, here, let me just turn the page. Okay. And we're moving back to Agenda Item 7, at which time I'm opening up a public hearing for financial year 2017-18 budget. And with starting with public hearing for the budget. Any presentation on it?
No, I'm sorry, I was waiting for the ordinance.
Okay. That was on, I was just going on. Okay, go to Part B, ordinance number 1140. Jim?
Ordinance number 1140, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the final levy of adware and taxes by establishing an operating millage rate of 8.1518 mils for fiscal year 2017-2018, providing an effective date, it's the second reading of ordinance number 1140.
Motion to approve ordinance number 1140 on second reading.
Motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Approve ordinance 1140 on second reading. First, any further council comments? At this time, portion B of Item 7, ordinance 1140, I'll open up for public comment.
Tom Ross, at 621.7 Satellite Beach. My question is, I see you raising the taxes, but I noticed our property values have been going up, too. So my question is, why do you think you need both the millage increase, along with all these property values been going to increase recently?
I'll answer it. Courtney, you wanna do it, or you want me?
We're not milling.
The millage is the same. We didn't raise the millage.
This is 6.43 increase.
That might be the rollback.
That might be the rollback.
Yeah, the millage is the same.
The millage is the same, 8.1518.
So you're saying you didn't roll, okay, either way, you didn't roll it back.
We didn't roll it back.
Why? In with the increases, but.
Yeah.
So the question's the same, but still, it increased, we just didn't roll it back. So, effective it's an increase.
But we did not increase the millage, but we, but your property values are increasing, and that's how we cover the increased cost of healthcare, increased cost of construction costs, gas, everything else costs more for us, just like it does for you in your world. So that's why we have to, we have to keep up with those cost increases.
And there's one other, the home, the extra 25% homestead, which is coming up in the future, we're gonna cover that, and that's gonna be 600,000 thousand dollars.
I had in the, in the budget presentation, we had a slide that showed where the money was going to. We have cost of living increases for the employees. We had an increase, or change in pension laws that we had to deal with from a state level, which increased the cost there. We have just typical operating increases in the department budgets.
But the pension was a big, that was.
That was a lot.
We had to cover, that was a big one. Pay now or pay later, they're making us go under a different set of mathematical.
Is that the state?
We don't have.
Firemark said it. It's legislative.
Yep.
So that's, that's pretty much where it goes. I mean, we don't, we don't have a lot of new, we don't have any new positions or anything. It's just cost increases.
Actually, our departments have been coming in at budget or under budget in most cases. I mean, we budget very conservatively, and they've done a good job of staying within the budget that their departments have. It's just these increases that are being passed out to us, just the same way that, you know, in my business, I have cost increases that go up in my business, in your life, things go up in your life, too, so, I mean, it's the same thing.
Like taxes, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, you're right, but that's.
Which saves my pension. Retirement.
We have, we also have, we've had two hurricanes in one year that we had to pay for in terms of cut cleanup, so debris cleanup is about $100,000 every time we have a hurricane, stuff like that. So it's, we also have a significant overtime, because, I mean, every police officer works the whole time during a hurricane, and so does our fire department, and so does our public works department. So we had two of those in the same fiscal year, and that's a big deal. So that's, we have to, we have reserves for that, and then we have to start budgeting for putting that back in reserves.
Okay. But this was done before the second hurricane, right?
Correct, so that budget.
So when you say there's two hurricanes, you really didn't even know there was a second hurricane.
Yeah, next, next year, we'll be putting the money back for this hurricane. That's why we have reserves.
This money will come out of reserves.
And then again, the state hits us with stuff during the year that we don't, we didn't anticipate, and we have to cover it in the following year. And, you know, that's why we're so strong on home rule and so forth, that we wanna be able to control our budgets, and when they put different positions on those, like, is it next year, is that possible?
It will go through, it's a $25,000 homestead.
25% additional homestead exemption.
$2,000.
25,000, excuse me, which will be about $650,000 hit to the city again.
It'll be a constitutional amendment.
Of the services in the city.
So you'll benefit from that, you'll see a little bit of a decrease next year.
You'll see a $15 tax decrease, and we'll see a $600,000 hit to our budget.
Yeah.
Is basically where it'll play out.
So we have, before the budget, we have staff budget review committee meetings, and it's interesting, because I have these meetings with the staff, because they have sometimes the same opinion as you guys do, you know, like, why can't you give us more raises, why can't you do this? And I let them go through the budget, and they realize we don't have a lot of money here to give out, we don't have a lot of room here to cut. And I think a lot of residents can go through the same exercise, but, so the cost increases that, or the increase in taxes that you see are literally just to cover the cost increases. We don't, we don't have any special things in there at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment still open? Hearing none, back to council, any further council comments? Hearing none? One more?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Cuttino?
Yes. Ordinance 1140 passes. Moving on to ordinance number 1141. Jim?
Ordinance number 1141, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting fiscal year 2017-2018 budget, providing an effective date, it's the second reading, ordinance number 1141.
Motion to approve ordinance number 1141, second reading.
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Further discussion from council before I open up for public comment?
I met with a guy from AT&amp;T today who kind of commandeered me at the delegation and he mentioned that he would like to come and present to the council what it is that they want to do and he wants to give some examples from like what has happened in Orlando. And I have his card, I don't know if it's something we want to, you know, think about doing and, and just for when we're changing. But there's other cities that have already done this, right? So we don't really, we need to hear from him.
It'd be very, you know, it would be good to hear from the companies to find out what their plans are and what they want to.
Is this for IG stuff? Yeah, well, this is budget stuff.
Oh, I thought we were on eleven forty-three, which is.
No, we're on the one, we have two parts of this.
Oh, I thought.
That's all right.
She's been without power too long.
I told you, I know. Caught up on my.
Any further comment on eleven forty-one from council? At this time, open up for public comment on Portion C, ordinance eleven forty-one. I'm going to bring back the council. Any further council comments? Here are none. Lenora?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Cudina?
Yes, motion passes. I'll close that public hearing and open up a second public hearing on Agenda Item Eight, ordinance number eleven forty-two. Jim?
Ordinance number eleven forty-two, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending ordinance numbers eight-three-six, ten-ninety-seven, and eleven-fifteen of the City of Satellite Beach by updating, updating the City of Satellite Beach Community Redevelopment Plan Capital Projects List and textual references to that list, providing for conflicts, providing severability, and providing an effective date, the second reading, ordinance number eleven forty-two.
Motion to adopt ordinance eleven forty-two on second reading?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilman Gibson. At this time, any further comments from council? Here are none, open it up on ordinance eleven forty-two for public comment. Here are none, back to council. Any further from council? Here are none. Lenora?
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cudina?
Yes, motion passes. I'll close that public hearing, open up another, another public hearing on Agenda Item Nine, discuss, excuse me, take action on ordinance eleven forty-three.
This is what I thought we were on.
Jim?
Ordinance number eleven forty-three, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, establishing a temporary moratorium on the acceptance, processing, or approval of any wireless communication facilities in the city's rights of way, providing for severability, severability and providing an effective date, the second reading of ordinance number eleven forty-three.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance eleven forty-three on second reading?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Osmer, second by Councilman Montanaro. Discussion on eleven forty-three from council.
I just, I just want to say one thing. The comments that you were talking about, this is an example right here of how the state has mandated things that eventually will cost our city money, that we have no control over. This is just one example, right here, with this wireless communication stuff that's coming to our city, so.
This bill basically, he hands over our rideaways to the cell phone industry and allows them to put in our public rideaways, small, it could be up to basically a refrigerator-sized piece of equipment in our rideaways, and we are, we are required to, to provide a permit for that. I don't really know how that works with, when we want to deny a permit because of safety reasons, but we're still required to give the permit. Because of that, but, but the Senate at the last minute negotiated a provision in the bill that would allow us to provide design standards, which would basically say, you know, they would have to combine, I mean, if they put in a new light fixture for their facility or for their equipment, that they would have to match existing light fixtures, stuff like that. And they gave us the ability to do a moratorium to allow us to, to do those design standards, so that's what this is.
I know, yeah. I mean, this is a great opportunity that they gave us, but the fact still remains, it costs us money, we can't charge them for the permits, and we have to maintain the equipment that their equipment is attached to.
We also are required to pay for the movement of it. So if we have to widen the road or put in a sidewalk or anything of that nature and we have to move their facilities, we have to pay for that, which is unprecedented. Every utility that uses our rideaways has to pay for the movement of their utilities when we need to have it moved, so unfortunately, they got that, that foot in the door for, and now the other utilities are just going to follow suit next year, I can assure you.
Yep. Okay. Any further counsel? I'll bring it back. Okay. At this time, open up eleven forty-three for public comment. Floor is open for public comment on eleven forty-three. Here are none, back to council. Any further council discussion? Lenora?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Cudina?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. We did ten. We'll move on to eleven, discuss, take action on city direction regarding medical marijuana dispensaries. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. On November eighth, Florida voters approved an amendment to the Florida Constitution, November eighth, two thousand and sixteen, sorry, to legalize the cultivation, production of dispensing of medical cannabis to a broader population of eligible persons than previously allowed. That law basically allowed, basically requires us to permit medical dispensaries in the way that the state outlines it in their bill, or we can ban them. The way the state outlined it in the bill is so specific, it reads like a typical zoning district would, which is very unusual. I don't think I've ever seen a state statute have distances between schools and stuff like that, which is normally what you'd see in a local government's land development regulation, but they were that specific. Unfortunately, we're, we have to, to do it that way or not at all. That's, that's basically the two ways that we were given by the state of Florida. So we cannot provide, you know, a limit on the number of dispensing facilities located within our city. And in there, we had indicated that there was a population restriction that allows only one dispensary per ten thousand. That's actually not true. The, that was a mistake. The law provided, every time there's ten thousand new patients, then they can approve a, a provider, a new provider. So that, that law is not true. However, that, the law that's on, you know, the, the requirement of ten thousand new patients before a new provider, basically effectively limits the amount of providers throughout the state of Florida. So the problem is, is that in the November election, seventy-two-point-two percent of our voters voted for this. So we would feel very uncomfortable banning them or recommending to you to ban them. So we are recommending that you go ahead and allow the city attorney and staff to create, craft an ordinance consistent with the statute and look at if there's any other ways to address concerns, then we can do that. We did go through the training at the League of Cities and went through examples of what some of these dispensaries look like. I have to say, they look more like a makeup Sephora shop than they look like, you know, a pot den in Amsterdam, so, so I don't see the, the fear, I understand the fear, but I don't see those fears being realized with this. I do have a fear that if we allow these now, if it, if there was a recreational marijuana passing later, we want to craft the ordinance in such a way that it only is specific to this type of facility, so that if recreation marijuana passes later, if it does, that these facilities, if we had more than one, would that be able to transition into our recreational provider? So that's, that's one of the things that we want to make sure that we can do. But that's our recommendation, is to move forward with allowing them consistent with state statute.
Thank you very much. So the recommend, recommended action is to authorize city manager to bring back an ordinance to permit medical marijuana dispensaries in our city. A consensus? I think we need a vote, I should vote on this, it's Agenda Item. Discussion before I open up for public?
I just want to say, I was at that, at the League of Cities, the Florida League of Cities, and they did, you know, I was a little nervous. You know, I was my own little wild child, but I could say I was a little nervous about having my children be raised in a community, you know, where they were, they looked like head shops, you know, with, you know, tie-dyed people and, you know, all that stuff, and they don't look anything like that. I mean, they really, you could probably pass by one and you wouldn't even know what it was or that it was what it is, I guess. So I did feel a lot more comfortable walking away with that. And they're very, the security requirements in these places are crazy, so we're going to probably impose our own too, right?
Well, the, the state has very specific guidelines regarding security. I mean, it's so, it is, the way they wrote this is exactly how I would have probably wrote an ordinance, with the exception of limiting the number, which is something I would have done, but they, they, they would not allow us to do that. But the way they wrote how it can be located and what they have to do is very similar to what we did for pain management clinics, I mean, with the security and the cameras and it's, and very similar to convenience store regulations, you know, and having that conveni, you know, the, the surveillance systems and stuff like that. They also require, that they, they do not allow the display of products either. So when you, if you go into one of those stores, you, you're in a waiting room, so it's like a doctor's office, really. The concern with medical marijuana now is because it's not federally allowed, is that they have to deal with cash only. So that, of course, brings another realm of, you know, concern to the police department, but they do, again, they have to have security in, in, at the, at the location by the state statute, so.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with, with, you know, coming back with whatever recommendation they come back with so we can look at it. So I would make a motion to authorize the city manager to bring back an ordinance to permit medical marijuana dispensaries in the city and we can look at it and, and make a decision based on what we have in front of us.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Brymer. At this time, I'd open up for public comment on Agenda Item Eleven.
John Fergus, one thirty-five, Maple. I will respectfully disagree. We don't have a Walmart in this town. We don't have a Lowe's. There's a lot of things we don't have. Let Harbor have it if they want it. Let the unincorporated have it if they want it. I see it as possibly a problem, especially as things go on, because you know it's coming, recreational, it's just, it's a given. It's just a matter of when. And we don't know how the state's going to handle that transition. We could say what we want. I would say it's safer to say no. And the other question I would ask, and I hadn't thought to look it up, in this community, in our three precincts, how did this referendum fare? I'm not talking about the state, I'm talking about our community.
Seventy-two-point-two percent.
Yeah. It shows the three percent.
Precing four oh five, four fifteen, and four thirty-seven.
Okay, okay.
Basically five thousand to two thousand.
Yeah, but I've got a real caution about this.
I can one thing.
All right. Okay. I'll bring it back. Public comments still open on this agenda item? Okay. No further public comment? Min?
Just that, okay, this may or may not ease your minds. When we were in this symposium, there are cities out there that have their ordinances already set up, everything is ready to go. Was it Fort Walton Beach has, has opened their doors and they said, bring them to us, we'll take as many as you want. And this is, was for like six, had been six months already, they don't have any, not one company. So you have three companies that are allowed in the state, so we're going to open this up. I'm, I'm kind of banking and maybe hedging and not doing a good thing, but Fort Walton has been welcoming them to come in and open their businesses and they're not interested in Fort Walton Beach, which is close to some, you know, some Pensacola, the, you know, they're like spring break areas, you know, those places don't allow them yet in Fort Walton is, and they haven't really been knocking the doors down and I don't foresee them immediately. I mean, it probably will come, you're right, that they are, they are coming and I'm hoping by the time they're interested in our town, everything is kind of.
Well, I think like we did, and that, we, we actually receiving calls for, for, from interested people before the state passed the bill.
Right.
And after the state passed the bill, we haven't heard a word. I mean, I don't think, John's not hearing one, but we haven't heard anything. And that's large part because the state, it's very highly regulated, this, the medical marijuana piece, is incredibly regulated. I would be shocked if people were able to get through the, and, and lie their way through getting it. And if they did, then they, the, a type of marijuana that is, is allowed has such a low THC content that it's not, for recreational users wouldn't find it very attractive because it doesn't have what they want, you know? So that, that's the other issue. I also think the state did a great job in figuring out how to, to deal with it from a regulatory standpoint on the provider side. Unfortunately, they did, you understand the House, the House representative was very much into wanting to be a city, I guess, and, and control our zoning. That's what they tried to do here and then, but the Senate side wanted to give us the ability to do something, and so they gave us the ability to ban it. And unfortunately, because of the cities not being able to do what they want on the zoning side, they're simply banning it. And a lot of cities would have allowed it if they were able to control their own zoning, but that's not the way it's going. Unfortunately, I think for us in our city, when you have seventy-two percent of the residents that voted for it, if we say no to that, you know, what message does that send to the voters, you know? That's my recommendation, is to go ahead and create an ordinance.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that. Seventy-two percent is a pretty strong number and it tells something, so, you know, we need to go through the process and get it here. Any further comment from that? Okay. Lenora?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Cudina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Courtney, you'll bring it back to us at some point you feel comfortable. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Thirteen.
Twelve.
Excuse me.
Twelve, Jim, it's confusing.
Yes. Just give me one second, please. Oh, okay, I thought this was the last one, I'm sorry. Okay, um, thank you. Agenda Item Twelve is cities managers' benefit and compensation. A few meetings back, I asked the council for me to do some research on this and bring it to you. I formed a group of citizens, Dave Schechter, Dave Omler, and Mike Crady, a past city manager, to look at it. When we hired our city manager that we have at this time, we really put together a package for her. And I think she has more than proven herself and I would like to make sure she doesn't leave or somebody else comes looking for her. And so I put this group together and at your eyes here is some of the information they brought back. So on the last page is some of the things I think we can do at this time within our budget. And one thing that's not here, and I've discussed this with the city manager, the salary is not here, okay? Because we generally visit salary at the anniversary date of the employee after we do our evaluations. So I'd like to keep that consistent. So proposal is that the severance pay is governed basically by the state of Florida and that ordinance is, it's twenty weeks and that is the max that can be done. And generally, when you look at on the CMA, other city managers, that's very much standard way to play, operation there. The next thing, the retirement, we were putting approximately fifteen percent into Mikes at this time. We're putting in five and our city manager puts five. My recommendation is to put that in. We put that portion in ten, five less than we were doing for the previous city manager. And then the health care, and we pay for her health care, and when you add the bill it up, it's fifteen-seven-oh-nine, okay? And I think she's done a remarkable job. She's more than proved herself and I, I want her to have a contract, a package she feels comfortable with. feels comfortable with. She's only as good as the five councils, she's our only employee, she's really not an employee of the city, as I say, so she's only as good as the next four years' elections or whatever. And so I would like to see us take a look at having Jim draw up an agreement, and with the health benefits, the retirements, and the severance, the severance doesn't cost us anything at this time. We have to do it, that's the state statute, and.
Do we do this by consensus, or do we?
Well, I, I would, um.
I mean, you're going to have, are we asking them to bring us back something?
What I'm asking us to do is, what I think at this point is, if you feel comfortable, and we'll open up for public comment also, is to allow the health benefits, the retirement, and the severance.
I'll make a motion to approve those three items, and have Jim come back with a package and a contract.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Osmer. Discussion from council. At this time, open up for public hearing on this item. Here and none, bring it back. For everybody there's, the information that we derived this from was directly from the City Managers Association in the state. So we have every city in the state, we looked at it, we did it per, they did it per size and so forth, and this is not something that's over bounds one way, it's not under, we're basically right in the middle on a city our size, so. Any further discussion? And here and none, Lenore?
So you're going to do public comment?
I did, I already did that.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry. Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Courtney, thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it.
And Jim will work on, on that, of course, thank you. Okay.
You can already tell Steve is going to make fun of me later.
He is, he already told me. Okay, moving on now, I hope to agenda item thirteen, which is the, excuse me, agenda item thirteen, which is the agenda for next council meeting. Please take a look at it, if you could, and if you need any additions to it. I have one question, Lenore, that the Friends of the Library Week?
Yes.
Are they going to be here because?
They requested it.
On that, on the first reading, rabbit?
I will confirm, I will confirm.
Okay, what I'm saying is, we have another council meeting which falls into their timeframe.
We typically try to have it before.
That's fine.
The information, I will confirm this.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say, just for your notice, I will not be here on that second meeting in October.
Okay.
So if we need to put something on this agenda, because I, you need us all here or something, is why I'm, is why I'm trying to tell you that, I will not be here, I will be out of town for the second meeting in October.
Okay. Let me ask this question then, because I think there's a couple of things that I think it's best that we are all here. Courtney, when do you think the RV ordinance is going to be to us?
We had to push that out because we canceled the Monday meeting for P&amp;Z.
Right.
So I'll get, I'll get you that schedule, but we can move it around you.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody is.
As long as I know, you know.
Right.
On that.
That's, and that's why I'm telling you.
I want everybody to be.
I know we have something that we all want to be here for, so I, I wanted to make sure you're down ahead of time.
Does anybody else have any dates coming up here that is going to be an issue? Okay, all right. If, if it does, please get with Courtney and discuss it. Okay, moving on to agenda item fourteen, which is approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the July twenty-seventh special meeting, the September sixth workshop meeting, the September sixth regular meeting, and the September sixth emergency meeting as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Montanaro, second by Councilwoman Gibson. Any further discussion on the minutes? Here and none, Lenore?
Councilwoman Breimer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Osmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Any further business for council? Sure, everyone, thank you very much. Please, John.